Thank you very much. Okay, so has everybody read and do we approve the minutes of the regularly scheduled meeting of the Planning Commission held on May seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one?
I approve the proposals, just approve.
Second. I'm so sorry. We're gonna get through this together, I promise. Okay, I've got a motion to approve.
And a second.
And a second. On favor? Aye. Aye. Do I get to? Oh, any opposed? No. Okay. All right, reports of officers and staff.
Thank you, I just have one informational comment on July sixth at five thirty P. M. We will be having a conference of plan kickoff meeting for the general public at five thirty at the high school lecture hall. For anybody that wants information on the upcoming conference of planning project consultants will be in town. And it's a large public meeting to get information that we can start.
Great, thank you. All right, old business. None? None? Okay, great. New business, have some. First, we have a, we'll go into the zoning map amendment. Yes, I need to look. Okay, so first, we have a zoning map amendment. For, it's a two fifty-two request, a request to rezone two oh six West Hogan Street from low-density residential district R one to neighborhood commercial district C three. The applicant is Jack Hagopian? Did I get that right? Okay, great. Got one thing right today, so. Okay, let's see. All right, so. Okay, we'll open it up to a public hearing. If anybody has any comments to make, please step up to the podium and. Is there? And state your name and address. Sure. Great.
We purchased the property intending to open a business there. It had been a business before, a dentist's office. My wife got ill and were unable to open it, so we were in the process of trying to sell it. It's, it's next door to a business, so there are other businesses around it. Although there are also some residences around it, so it's mixed use right now. But this particular property has a striped parking lot. And the city had already had us put in, you know, a wheelchair ramp and, you know, grab bars in the bathrooms. Fire extinguishers in the hall, everything like that. So we just feel like, you know, especially with the striped parking lot, it more fits a business use than what the rest of us, so.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, so, let's see. Guess now I open it up to the commission, whether, do we present any questions or concerns to the applicant?
Do we need staff comments first?
Staff comments, according to my field notes here, come.
No comments.
No comments.
Are we closing the public forum?
Okay, great. So now, we will go to the public hearing if anyone else has anything to say on this rezoning request. Please step up to the podium and state your name and address.
Hi, I'm Bobby Wilson, I'm the real estate agent, just trying to help Mr. Hagopian sell the property. I just wanted to make sure everybody's kind of aware that this has only ever been a medical office, it's only ever been an office. And it's really, there are already closets in the bedroom. I think right now it's zoned currently as residential. Although it's, you know, it's really not suitable for residential. So, so that's why we're hoping to get a.
Great, very good, thank you. Anyone else? Okay. All right, so, so then there was no staff comments, so any questions from the commission? Okay, do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a comment.
Sure.
This was Dr. Mike Rutherford, dental offices for many, many years. It's adjacent to Dr. Perkins' urology office right at the corner of Jackson and Webb Tovin. White makes a part of the zoned commercial and right across the street from O'Reilly's Auto Car Store.
Okay, wonderful. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, great. All right, anyone opposed?
Discussion.
A discussion. Sorry. Look at the hang of this. Any discussion? Nope. Okay, great. All right, so.
Do you have a presentation? Okay.
Okay. Oh, Scott, sorry.
It's okay. I'll just, I'll be brief. Yes, they're requesting to rezone the property from R one to C three. It was historically a medical office. That's considered a non-conforming use which can continue. However, to any other non-residential use, that would have to be in the perusing district. After staff review of the existing zoning map. You can see, it's right at the edge of a commercial area being the C one. Because of the proximity to downtown. I felt that the C three was an appropriate district, C three is a neighborhood which is used. Zoning district would just kind of have the edge of the larger commercial areas going into residential areas as well as, as you know, C three allows for some residential uses as well as commercial uses. So I think it's a good compromise for this specific area. If you look at the conference of plan, this area is technically within a residential land category. However, with conference of planning and land use planning, it's a guiding document. And those boundaries between the different land use map categories are loose boundaries. So if you're on an exact boundary, the designation can go either way based on the existing zoning pattern. As the city attorney stated, there are commercial uses kind of in the immediate area of property. Therefore, based on the findings of fact, if you're located in your staff report on page seven, the staff is recommending a favorable rental deal to the board and mayor.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, so I guess we'll do it again. Do I have a motion? Or is there any, any questions from anyone on the commission closing remarks?
I actually had a question for Mary really quickly, which doesn't have to do really, but is an overall question. So, looking at the existing use map, it totally makes sense to me for why this would be going to commercial. Because some of those that are also up there zoned, it looked like as residential or already as commercial used to. Is that correct? Are they just non-conforming? Is that how we're? Okay, great.
And this is, this is C three, so this is kind of, this is the new one, right? Yeah, so this is, the other stuff is, I guess, C two around it, okay.
C one is directly around it because it's on this southern Wilson. So it's one of the downtown southern districts.
And this allowed, this allowed for both uses, I guess. Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, now do I have a motion?
I think we already had a motion and a second.
So just use, use the old one?
Yes.
Okay, great. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, anyone opposed? All right. There you go. Okay, moving on, we have a zoning map amendment request, a request to rezone seven oh four Forest Drive from low-density residential district R one to high-density residential district R three. Applicant is Ernie Hobbs. Is Mr. Hobbs here or representative? Hello, how are you? Thank you for joining us. Please state your name and your address and.
Erst Hobbs, which address do you want?
Whichever you prefer. Okay, great.
We, we own this property at seven oh four Forest. It's actually a quad unit apartment building. Used to be the old water plant, Forts, Oklahoma. They were converted back into apartments back in the nineties. There's two apartments on the Forest Drive side and there's two apartments on the Country Club side. And they're pretty old. Since we have so much land there, if you know anybody looking for a rental right now, there's not much available. So, and I'm talking to a lot of good estate people I know. They're telling me that there are a lot of low-end rentals, but some mid-range rentals really are needed right now. So what we'd like to do is raise, put some there and build some more units on that property. Make it doer, brood, and provide more rental property for those looking for residential property.
Great, thank you very much. Thank you for your time. Let's see. The commission, any questions for anyone? Okay, great. I'll now open it up to a public hearing. If anyone has any comments to make from the general public, please state your name and your address.
My name is Barbara Dattulo, D.A.T.T.U.L.O. I live at seven oh seven Forest Drive, which is directly across the street from there. The neighborhood is all single-family residents in that area. If I'm not mistaken, that building is zoned as a residential neighborhood, residential single R one, as you guys refer to it. The people that just built right next door to that property, they did not know that their car company had been rezoned. But they are a single-family resident. House next to that one is single-family residence. The three homes that are adjacent to me are all single-family residents. The traffic on Forest Drive has become tremendous. And if we add more apartment complex to that area, it's gonna be becoming overwhelming. The flooding that takes place in that area, unless it is addressed, it's gonna cause even more issues in that area. There is several people that wanted to come to this meeting, but due to their work schedule, could not make it here today, so I'm speaking on their behalf. I don't feel that we need additional apartments in that single-family area. Country Club Drive is all single-family residents. Going down to Druid Stewart area, most of that area is all single-family residents. Forest, Ford, everybody right there in that general area is all single-family. We're all opposed to having an apartment complex built in that area, especially for high-density traffic that we really don't think we need in that area at this time.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else? And this is, no comment. I forgot to say that you have two minutes for each person, and if you would like to give your time to anyone else, please let us know. Is there any, anyone else who'd like to make a comment?
My, probably.
Oh, name and address, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
No, no, you're.
I'm Karen Sullander.
Okay, thank you.
Am I a, in all technicality, maybe a rental unit of somebody that is in adjacent to Barbara Dattulo's property? Yes, I am. My parents, my dad is here and I own the property that I live in. And I am a single mom of a special needs child on three twenty-sixth Druid Lane. I fear, as is, for the traffic on Druid Lane, for my child, my twenty-year-old special needs child, to check the map, to take the garbage to the road. As is. We don't need any more traffic on Druid Lane. We don't need any more downing of our area. If it was something that was a condo, not high residential, that's okay, that's gonna improve our area. But a apartment complex, no, I'm not okay with it. I'm not okay with it from my side.
Thank you for your comments. I think your time is up. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to make a comment? Okay. Is there, are there any questions from commission or any comments or questions? Would like to pose?
Is it time for Mary to speak?
I have applicant, um, staff, oh. Was Mary, do you have any, anything you'd like to say?
I have a quick presentation. Again, the applicant is proposing to rezone the property to R three zoning district. Here is a zoning map of the consistent property, it's in the gray highlighted area. To the direct south is already a multifamily zoning district as well as the bright orange color, I'm sorry, bright yellow color is the R two zoning district. Which allows for single-family residences as well as duplexes. Here is the conference of land use map, which is the guiding document for which a lot of rezonings are taken into account. This is the plan map for what the adopted conference of plan shows for this area. And the bright yellow color is the medium density, high-density residential category. So according to the plan, this area is supposed to transition from single-family houses over to medium or high-density residential. So that's the primary guiding document that we build on top of. Saying that this property is one point six four acres, it has a non-conforming use of multifamily residential, it's not one, because multifamily is not allowed in the current R one zoning district. The property meets all zoning standards for the R three district. If this property were to be rezoned for the R three zoning district, based on this court footage of the site, it is one point six four acres and the density. A maximum of twenty-three billion units could be constructed, that's to be twenty-three duplexes, twenty-three condos, twenty-three apartment units, any, any mess of which is up to the applicant. Saying that, based on, goes in a objective sound in the conference of plan, has this recommendation of the rezoning based on the findings of that on page eighteen to nineteen in your staff report.
Thank you, Mary. Any questions or remarks by the members of the commission?
I got that right that time. That's what it says in my notes. Questions? I'm waiting for a motion, so before I start discussion.
Oh.
Didn't get it right.
No, no, you're fine, you're fine. I don't know, I don't know any. It's fine. Do I have a motion?
I'll move for discussion. Move to approve.
Okay. Open it up to discussion?
Yeah, so, Mr. Hobbs said something that I hear every day, that we are hearing from our citizens, that there's a need for mid-range housing. Not just the, you know, ability to have, you know, we have a lot of public housing, which is, is fantastic for those who need it. We also have a lot of single-family homes, but we have a base, an air force base that requires people to come in and possibly move quickly. A lot of those people would like to see townhomes, condos and apartments. That are in areas where schools, where their kids can walk to school, et cetera. I can say that, to me, this seems like to fit a need that is very much needed in our community right now. And I think, I hear the concern about having it be too high density in some ways. But at the same time, I, I can't imagine, maybe I'm wrong, putting the actual, how many does it say you could actually put on there?
Theoretically twenty-three, but I say theoretically always because.
Yeah.
They would have to put all your park infrastructure.
Exactly.
Range, parking.
Will it perk, like, will it, yeah, I mean, not perk, but. But I, I think that, that is, for me, you know, we're, we're needing housing right now. And we need things that people can not have to invest their entire life savings into to buy. I'd love to hear what y'all think.
I, I agree. I think that's a reasonable use. I mean, there's about four units on it now.
Is the question, is the concern traffic into Forest more than onto Country Club? Is that where?
I think traffic on the Druid and traffic onto Forest.
The Druids are cut across to get to the base, I think, from the developments we're developing out at the Riley Creek and Avoca range.
Oh, that road?
Yeah.
But I, you know, and there is an opening onto Country Club directly.
Correct. So this is, is a double fronted lot.
And the plot, the actual plans will come before us, is that correct, before they're approved?
No, it would be a site plan approval.
A site plan approval, correct, okay.
Well, I too hear so many times the need for housing of this type. Understand the concern with the neighbors that are there. But some nice apartments, I don't think would be a detriment.
And I also heard from the neighbors that they were okay with condos, and I'm, I'm confused as to what the difference would be between condos and higher-end apartments. Which I think, you know, that, that is something that, you know, to me. I, I don't know. Is there an actual difference? Is there a def- definition difference? Cause I don't.
Yes, there technically is.
There is, okay.
Yeah, a condo, somebody actually does even invest in condos.
Oh, like purchasing, like, well, I, okay, got it.
Yeah, apartment, you know, just make rent.
Okay, and is, this is gonna be apartments?
It's a horizontal property regime.
Okay.
See, I do know something.
Okay. So these will be rentals?
Really, I, you know, I see this for like grandmothers, you know, that can't take their, you know, yard anymore, but they don't need a system to live in. They just need a safe place to live for free rent. I understand the, the traffic concerns, but. Get right at folks that live there, you know, that live out in the north door of the base, as you said, that, you know, others that stand there all day, so. Proceed, proceed, I didn't imagine a lot of traffic to that area, but.
And there are townhomes back there, correct? Also, like, near, nearby, like, on Forest, if I'm remembering correctly, there's those townhomes that are. They're duplexes, yeah, they look like duplexes. So there, there are multi-family, okay.
I'm sorry, Mary, where did, um, where would the, where would the ingress and egress possibly be? Does anyone? For that?
That would be on the site plan.
It could be from either street or both streets.
But it could, okay.
But we don't have a site, but we're not approving the site plan.
Right, I'm just trying to see if the.
But unfortunately, we can't put conditions on it, so.
Right.
But it could be from either or both streets. It could be, unfortunately, they are a double fronted lot, so if they would like to have access on the both streets, that would at least pin up.
Yeah, right, that was what I was getting to. Any other comments, remarks, questions? No, I'm so sorry. Each member of the general public's only allowed two minutes. I'm very sorry. Okay. Do I have a motion?
Mary.
You got a motion and a second. Call the question.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I might as well. Any opposed? No, okay.
Motion passes.
Motion passes for zero.
Passes zero.
At five to zero. All right. Third time's a charm, yeah.
Also, I'm sorry, are the, are there mics on, somebody?
Sure.
Me.
Probably be happy that the mic was not loud later. Okay, here we go, third time's a charm. Zoning map amendment request, a request to rezone thirty-five seventy-four New Manchester Highway from general commercial district C two to low-density residential district R one. Applicant is Brian Langham. Did you get that right? Okay, great. I state your name and address and.
Brian Langham, one two flat drive, Manchester.
Great. Anything you want to tell us about the project?
We, we bought the property last year, finished a remodel on it. We, we actually have a contract on it. And through the appraisal process, over sign online, it was on C two as a VA, I guess, restriction, a VA loan. So we're not meant to the, to the buyer, to the, to the designation.
Right, okay. Okay, great. Right, okay, okay, great, um, see, all right, um.
No, it's, it's not.
Okay, so, I'll now open it up to the public hearing, any members of the general public, please come state your name and address, and you have two minutes to make any comments or remarks you'd like to make to the commission, and then the applicant will be given a chance to respond to any questions afterwards. Is there anyone here that would like to make any comments? No, okay, um, do you have a motion?
Mary.
I'm sorry, okay, Mary, do you have any presentations to make?
Yes, thank you, this is a, from the, from the, from the property that thirty-five seventy-four New Manchester Highway, to be rezoned from General Commercial, C two to low-density residential R one, here's the subject property, um, you can see, I don't have a. Okay, um, it's, it's the, um, it's way out of New Manchester, and so what the story is, is that in nineteen thirty-nine, a single-family house was built on this property, in two thousand and six, the property owner of the, this property, as of November two thousand and six, requested to be annexed, and when they requested to be annexed, they requested a C two zoning district, so it was an annex applicant's request to be C two. In my staff report, I outlined, and you can see, in the conference of plan map, it's also on commercial, however, I, I learned in my staff report, if you look at the existing development pattern, in this area, beyond the full salvager across the street, across New Manchester's residential area, you have, in the conference of plan, numerous goals and objectives about reducing or eliminating strip commercial development, if, if there is to be strip commercial development, it's beyond Jackson, to limiting commercial development to sectors of the city where there's going to be services, at a far-reaching extent of the city, and it's no sewer available, or no, main infrastructure available, so, I guess in my professional opinion, when this was annexed, it should have been an annex and re-zoned to R one at that time, however, it wasn't, but, so now the applicant is coming forward to you today to re-zone it to R one to make the existing house conforming, saying that staff is recommending approval to the board and Mayor Olmen, based on the findings of that that was seen in the staff report on page thirty-five.
Okay, great, thank you, Mary. All right, do I have a motion to open it up for discussion?
Move to approve.
Sure.
Okay, great, any questions, remarks, members of this commission? No, okay, great, do I have a motion?
You have a motion, you have a second.
I don't, but you guys didn't say anything.
Oh.
No, no, no questions or comments?
Close question.
Call the question.
Great, call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? None, okay, great, motion passes, five, zero. Okay. Moving on, subdivision flats, we have Humphreys Minor Subdivision, a plat to create two residential lots from existing one point six six acres at sixteen oh one Old Estle Springs Road, the applicant is Candy Pendleton Humphreys, is Ms. Humphreys here, or representative? Hello, how are you, please state your name and address.
Hey, good evening, my name is Nicholas Northcutt, with Northcutt Surveying, and I'm representing Ms. Humphreys this evening.
Great, thank you, any remarks you'd like to make about this project?
No, pretty cut and dry, she had one point six six acres, on the outskirts of town, that she was wanting to buy, so that's about her time.
Okay, great, I'll now open it up to the members of the general public, if anyone has any comments to make, thank you for your time, please state your name and address, and you have two minutes, and if you would like to give your time to someone else, please let us know. Nope, okay, does staff have any reports to make?
The staff will be presenting. And the applicant stated, this is a proposed subdivision on one point seven zero acres at sixteen oh one Old Estle Springs Road, the applicant is proposing to create four lots, use of location map, it's at the corner of Old Estle Springs and Wythean Drive Road. Here is the proposed plat, again, there's four lots with road improvements, therefore they're in the minor subdivision process, each lot meets the known standard for the existing R one zoning district as far as area and lot dimensions, but will be served by public water and sewer, there is just one comment that still needs to be based on the plat after, when and if this project was approved, just about August fourth, one at four, adding a note that they can't back directly onto Old Estle Springs Road because it is a collector, other than that, it's under development, deeply reviewed, and recommended simple based on staff comments.
Great, thank you very much, great.
One point six eight, one point six six acres.
I had one point seven zero acres.
I do have a comment, in the, for the synopsis of the agenda, I see there's more three acres, than you lost, it's going to be four.
As far as that is, I don't get it.
I'm sorry, can I, someone clarify the exact acreage, did you?
Can you bring it back up? I don't have the notes, but I do have computer, if you want, in the third way packet, sir, note number four says there is a total of one point seven zero acres on the subdivision.
Thank you for clarifying that, there's, seems to be a typo on our agenda.
It, it does say one six on page forty-seven, though, or one six six, so.
It's okay, thank you, thank you for clarifying that. All right, I'll now open it up to the commission, do I have a motion to open it up for discussion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Great.
Paul.
Paul, yes, any questions, remarks from members of the commission, no, okay, do I have a motion?
You've got one.
Oh, I'm sorry, who?
Call, call a question.
I made a motion.
Oh, call.
We'll call the question.
Call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Okay, motion passes five, zero. As everyone can tell, I'm used to going before planning commissions instead of leading them. All right, moving on, try to get us out of here before dinner. All right, The Pines at Country Club, formerly Lakeside Crossing, it's a major subdivision, phase one final plat, a plat to create twelve residential lots from existing seven point four two acres at the northeast corner of Avoca Road and Country Club Drive, the applicant is Hart and Family Partners. Is the applicant here, or representative, state your name and your address, and any remarks you'd like to make, please.
My name's Andy Best, I'm the main surveyor who's hired to do this division, two seven three Hames Hall Road, Manchester, Tennessee, basically, this is a subdivision that came in front of the board, preliminary plat last month, which was approved then, for several lots then, at that point, but the developer, at this moment, is wanting to take the road furnished lots of that development, and push them, or get them through as a final plat, so that they can start selling the road furnished lots, since no improvements are needed, there's existing water, there's existing sewer, there's existing road, so, we're just seeking approval of these twelve lots, so they can go ahead and start selling the lots there.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Best. Okay, I'll now open it up to members of the general public, if you have any comments or remarks you'd like to make, concerns, please state your name and address, and you have two minutes, if you'd like to give your time to someone else, please let us know. Anyone? No, okay, Mary, do you have a report to make?
Yes, thank you, um, again, this is, it was formerly known as Lakeside, but now it's called The Pines at Country Club, this is, in fact, final plat for phase one of the development, as the applicant stated, the preliminary plat for the entire first section was approved at the previous time. Here is the entire property, you would just be looking at this lower area that comes on Country Club, here is the proposed plat, it indicated there's no road improvements required, so they are planning just as phase one, the only public improvements which have already been reviewed and approved with concrete conditions on the construction plans are retention adjustments on Lot One and the sidewalks along Country Club and Avoca, saying that the final plat meets all substantive requirements, meets all substantive requirements of the subdivision control ordinance, staff recommends approval based on staff comments of the staff report.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, at this time, do I have a motion to open it up for discussion?
Move to approve.
Sure.
With staff comments.
Move to approve with staff comments, that's right, sorry.
Okay, any questions, remarks, by members of the?
The only question I had, and I emailed Ms. Samanyego about it, was regarding the golf cart pass crossing on it, because I know, we have one also on Kings, like going into Kings Ridge from the Country Club, as well as some on fairways, I just wanted to make sure that this one, if we can, make sure that it's well lit, because I know a lot of people do golf in the evenings, et cetera, and if there's any way that we can ensure that that happens, and is striped or something, is, is that something that is feasible, or is that a request that can be made? I guess that's a question.
Um, to, Mary Samanyego, for the record, typically, those types of requests are at the preliminary plat, I can say that this site will comply with the street lighting requirements along Country Club, a request could certainly be put into the Public Works Department to make sure that that new intersection, if it were, is appropriately signed.
Yeah.
Or at least some sort of notification of it.
Reflector.
But typically, at the final plat, stage legally and correctly, if I'm wrong, Steve, you're just getting the plat document itself ready to report the improvements and the conditions of typically at preliminary plat.
So I missed it?
As far as tying it to the final plat, but we can certainly do it another way, going directly to Public Works to make the request.
Okay, great.
Do, do you agree?
Yeah, we'll, 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 we'll,
The, um, uh, developer is electing to, uh, complete the final plat for the entire project, so this will not be done in phases. Um, as, uh, Mr. Northcutt stated, the soils, um, have all been approved, and, uh, the final plat is ready to record. Um, there were no comments from staff, so staff recommends approval. Period.
Great, thank you. All right, um, so do I have a?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, all right. All right, um, any questions, comments, by members of the commission?
When this came up, um, for the preliminary plat, we, we had a discussion. Uh, Bill Comer and I and a couple had a discussion about what we were gonna do, if there was something to be done with Lot One. Um, it doesn't appear that anything had been done based on the previous one. I didn't have a whole lot of time to go back and look at my notes, but, but, um.
There was discussion on that item, but no formal motion was made because, uh, at the end of the discussion, it was determined these were county roads and that, um, that it would be, um, us to the county to, uh, improve their roadway system as needed. I will say that I did, um, forward the specific subdivision, as well as the Rutledge crossings in the immediate area to the Coffee County Planner, so he was aware that these were coming, uh, down the pipe, as it were, so he could prepare.
Excellent. Do they come to us first and then to the county?
No, they only, in the urban growth boundary, they only come to the planning commission, to us, for approval. But, um, out of the courtesy, I do send for larger projects, I send it to the county planner, so the county's, um, infrastructure mainly roads are aware kind of of the development pattern that's happening and what lots are being approved, so they can plan for it.
I mean, I'll still, I'll still go on the, go on the record with the comment that the, um, not really on the record, I guess, but the, um, that we're, we're. Well, it doesn't need to be, I mean, it's.
I still think that that's a dangerous intersection, and it's a good place. I've, I've looked at it carefully since our last discussion, and I, I really think that's a good place for a roundabout. And there's three roads coming in there at odd angles. Four, well, two, two roads in four different directions and coming in at odd angles. And, uh, it's.
They're adding a fifth as well.
Uh, I don't think we're adding a fifth, are we?
It, it's besides the point, but, um, there's another subdivision.
But, uh, you know, they don't come in all at the same place. And so a four-way stop or something like that wouldn't be a good idea, but a, a traffic circle there, I think, would really solve that problem. I don't think this is the correct forum, since this is a county issue, to, to, uh, to try to move that forward. But, uh, I, I, I really think that that would, in the future, be a good place for a, with, with two brand-new subdivisions being built there, and another one that's been proposed, I think, in, on the other quadrant over there. And, uh, it, it's gonna be a lot of traffic there. It's a lot of traffic there today. And it's really an odd intersection, the way those roads come in. And in my opinion, a traffic circle or a roundabout is the way to fix it.
Excellent. I also like roundabouts. Mary, perhaps you can share, that time you talked to the county, that we were a fan of the roundabout.
Of course.
Excellent. Okay. All right. I guess now I'll call the question. Yep. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes five zero. Uh, next we have text amendment. ZTA two-two-seven, text amendment for self-storage warehouse use. Is the applicant here?
It's us.
The staff is here.
The staff, sorry. I got one right. It's Mary. And, um, so, Mary, do you have any comments to make on this?
I would say for this text amendment, as well as the next one, uh, maybe Shelley, uh, I would do my report, and then you would open up her public comment.
That is.
Just to make more sense.
Would like to. If you report, that'd be great.
Yeah. Okay, let's go to, nope. Oh, I don't have a presentation for this one. I don't, um, producers, I don't have a presentation for the next two items. Um, okay, so for this one, self-storage warehouse. In nineteen, in twenty nineteen, uh, the planning commission on the Board of Mayor and Alderman approved a text amendment to refine and redefine all commercial uses and to move all the newly created commercial uses between the C-one and the C-two zoning district. During that process, um, self-storage warehouse was removed from the C-two zoning district, but it was not placed in any new zoning district. So since twenty nineteen, um, according to the code, there is not a listed zoning district that would allow for self-storage warehouse. I have heard from, um, approximately six different developers/business owners that would like to open self-storage warehouse uses, but unfortunately, I don't have a zoning district to tell them that they can go into. Saying that, um, I am bringing this, um, before you tonight with different ways, um, that you could re, kind of rectify the matter. The first thing that's, that I'm proposing is to create a definition for self-storage warehouse. Typically, whenever you have a defined use in your use table, it's good to have a definition, so it's clear for staff, the public, the planning commission, everyone, to understand what exactly that use entails. So the proposed language is, um, and again, it's on page sixty-three of your staff report. Self-storage warehouse, a building or group of buildings in a controlled access and fenced compound that contains various sizes of individual compartmentalized and controlled access stalls or lockers for the storage of customers' goods and, or wares. This use includes boat and RV storage in an enclosed building or as open storage in compliance with Section four oh four G for supplemental landscaping requirements. Four oh four G states that all open storage material and equipment incidental to promoted use, um, must conform to the C-two zoning setbacks and be screened from adjoining properties and public rights away with a minimum of a six-foot-high chain link fence with lattice, evergreen hedge, masonry wall, or another, um, solid screening material is approved by the planning commission. So that's, um, portion one of this report. It's a credit definition for self-storage warehouse, so we understand exactly what the use entails. Um, as a side note, I have included boat and RV storage because, um, two of the six applicants, or two of the six, um, developers that I've talked to specifically want those types of uses, and given kind of the recreational air, nature of this area of middle Tennessee and with all the lakes there are, it seems that RV and boat storages is a compatible use. And typically, in zoning context, it does fall under self-storage warehouse as opposed to its own separate use, because they have very similar zoning characteristics. Saying that, so that's part one. Part two, um, is determination of what zoning district self-storage warehouses should be permitted in. First, I, as part of my analysis, I looked at the zoning and planning characteristics of a self-storage warehouse. Typically, they're low traffic and low crime. Um, the facilities are usually closed at night with limited access. Typically, they offer enhanced security through, uh, fencing. It's very common for them to have the entire perimeter fenced. The self-storage warehouse uses are often placed in industrial zone districts, usually reserved for manufacturing or warehousing. But the operational characteristics of the industry differ specifically from formal industrial, um, manufacturing warehouse uses. Um, self-storage warehousing has fewer employees, less traffic, less noise, and scent, and hence, less of an impact. So self-storage warehouse customers more, typically want the easy access to their belongings and creating a need for local facilities near homes and kind of outside of those industrial areas that typically have a higher impact. Um, the facilities are usually designed with the following improvements. They're usually metal buildings with parking drive aisles and chain link fences surrounding them. These hardscape elements are typically not in keeping with a planned design of commercial areas. However, the existing Toluoma landscape code requires the following perimeter landscape improvements to soften the appearance. And I've included those, if you wanna look, um, planning commission at page sixty-five of your staff report, I've taken, um, an example of the existing landscape code that would apply to any new, um, self-storage warehouse use or one that increased the square footage of their use by more than five hundred square feet. So currently, this is a, um, shot of a self-storage located in the city, as an example. The, um, option below it, in the middle, is the first, um, landscape requirement of either deciduous, one deciduous tree for every hundred linear feet. So that's kind of, I've drawn in the trees, you can kind of see what that would look like. And then the other option, either you put one deciduous tree every hundred feet, or you put one evergreen tree every hundred feet with a shrub every linear foot of building frontage, kind of in between the trees. And that's what the bottom picture, um, is showing. Um, saying that, um, understanding kind of the, um, zoning impacts that I just stated of the use, um, it's my professional opinion, um, given the context of Toluoma, that the best option would be, um, to have the solid evergreen screening as the required option, not allowing a deciduous tree option, but to allow, um, the shrubs and the evergreen trees once every hundred feet to kind of soften the appearance of the self-storage uses, which is a lot of hardscape. It's either building and drive aisles and fencing, and that's it, to kind of soften the appearance. Uh, as opposed to, I did explore other options. If, if the entire thing was a solid, um, wall or fence, that's an added, uh, a considerable added expense to the developers. Also, it kind of creates a fortress-type look, where you're just, you would be driving by just a wall, uh, with no windows, no changes. So I think that the, um, evergreen hedge option is a good compromise to kind of screen the appearance, um, of the use, but in a softer, more natural way, as opposed to a solid wall or a solid fence. Um, saying that, um, I did include in your staff report on page sixty-seven a list of all of the existing air-conditioned, I'm sorry, come on, air-conditioned, uh, self-storage warehouses. There are approximately. There are fifteen self-storage warehouse uses that I could find in the city of Toluoma's jurisdictions. Because it's not allowed in a new zoning district, all of those are considered grandfathered and are not conforming. So none of those could expand. Of those fifteen, I would say that twelve of those are currently located in the C-two zoning district, and the remaining three are in the light industrial zoning district. So, um, that's the third, um, resolution that the planning commission would, would have to consider is what to do with all of the existing, beyond where the new one should go, what to do with all the existing, um, self-storage unit, uh, warehouse uses that are not conforming. Taking all that into consideration, the options that are before the planning commission would be to allow self-storage warehouse in the C-two zoning district or the light industrial, I-one zoning district, or both. Um, to allow it in the C-two zoning district, I-one zoning district, or both, with, um, one of the two required land, either all, you have to do the deciduous tree landscaping, or you have to do the evergreen landscaping. It's staff's recommendation, again, taking in all the data collection that it did, the analysis. Again, given the context of Toluoma, um, staff is recommending to permit it in both the C-two general commercial and the I-one zoning districts with the requirement that they must comply with the evergreen option of the landscaping. That completes my presentation.
Okay, thank you very much.
Can you ask questions?
I believe so.
So, okay, my question for you is, one of the things I heard complaints about was the chain link fence around it.
Correct.
Is that, so are you proposing that the evergreen hedging or bushes, um, to soften that? Because that was one of the things I'd heard, and, and is, is that correct?
Yes, the, it's my understanding, again, I'm an urban planner, not a self-storage, but I did a lot of research in it, and I don't know if anybody from the business, from the public is here to speak about it tonight. But it's, it, from my research, it's very common, um, for self-storage warehouse for their own protection to have chain link fences around the property.
Yeah.
The thought is that the evergreen hedges and the evergreen trees on the outside of the fence would eventually grow up and, and in effect, screen the fence.
The reason why I ask that is, um, so I, I randomly, I had to always have a lot of storage spaces in my, in my job, and, you know, one of the things I would always look at when finding a storage unit is I would not use a place with chain link fence, because it was easily cut, people would break into them. And so typically, if I were going to, I would rather pay more money to have one with, one of those gates that comes, closes in and out, and those heavy bars, et cetera. Um, and I know that you said that it was typically low-crime areas, but ti, what I, what I had happen was, a lot of our stuff, we, if we use chain link fenced areas, the concern was having, you know, millions of dollars of storage stuff, supplies.
Right.
Stolen. And I didn't know if that was not a concern here at all, and, because I know, I understand from the developer's point of view, that that would be, um, you know, cost ineffective for them, or cost, you know, but at the same time, maybe it would be something that they could, that I would be willing to pay more for if I were running a storage unit. I don't know if that's true here.
Yeah, I mean, that's definitely something that you consider with the use. You can do, you can mandate, um, type of screening and fencing that they use. And again, that is one thing I looked at. One thing that does, it's kind of along the same line of thought about safety. There's, um, something called SEPTED, which is Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design. And I looked at SEPTED studies related to self-storage warehouse, and they did said, did say that one of the issues with having self-storage warehouse in industrial areas, industrial areas typically on the weekends or at night are sparsely populated. And what often happens is that a, a semi-truck will pull in and cut through a fence and, and break, and they can clear the whole place out, because there's nobody out there. And so that's one of the concerns with having a self-storage warehouse use solely in an industrial area, beyond some of the other concerns.
Right.
Because there's not a lot of eyes on it. And typically, industrial areas aren't well-lit either.
That's correct.
So that's something else to consider.
We've developed, my firm I was with developed several, um, self-storage, um, facilities, and oftentimes, it's a liability issue from the insurance company that requires.
The, the landscaping re, uh, things, it, it feels a little bit unnecessary, maybe, to, to require landscaping in the industrial areas, maybe? Is that, is that, is that a common thing to have the, to have the, the, hold, hold them to the same, to the same standard?
Are you saying?
No, you could certainly separate it out.
Yeah.
You could certainly say that the.
Like, I could, I could understand, like.
Required in the commercial, but not in the industrial.
Like, like, just using some examples around town, like, I could see the one on, like, Cedar and Wilson being, you know, required landscaping and stuff like that. But the one that you use a picture of, is it really necessary?
But what if it's?
Well, but it is along a public right of way.
Or it could be adjacent to a residential area. It depends on where, how our zoning looks.
But typically, if it's an industrial use that's up against, up against, I'm sorry, that's abutting other industrial uses, it's exempt from the law.
Okay, that's my, that is my real question, I guess, thank you.
But we wanted to incentivize people to put in nicer fencing. Could we then say, hey, if you're putting in nicer fencing, you don't have to do the shrubbery?
Sure.
I just like to say shrubbery, as often as possible.
Yes. Yes, I like saying deciduous.
But then you have to define nice fencing, and I don't.
I know, and that, that's, that's my question, that's subjective.
There are a lot of options, the way that, yeah, that's an option you could do as well.
So how do we make that option happen?
Uh, through a motion.
Here?
Make a motion to that. I just, I gave you staff's recommendation, you can certainly tweak staff's recommendation and come up with a different recommendation.
How many readings of this did we get?
This goes through two readings.
Okay.
So would you, if we made a motion?
And if you're not ready to vote, you, and I would encourage you to vote on it, um, tonight, just because I know, like, there are about six or seven businesses kind of waiting, but you can certainly table this for a month if you need further time.
But, but if we made a motion tonight with, like, uh, would you be able to come back with, like, a proposal of, like, what the fencing could look like, so that they could get out of having to do the?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I could amend.
Sorry.
That's why I'm looking at you, I couldn't. Can I amend the proposed text and keep going to first reading at the board? Or if I amended the proposed text, I would have to bring it back to this planning commission?
We can amend, no, I, I don't care, first read.
Okay.
The way you would amend that would be to make a motion to approve this with the provision you want in. Because there's been no motion made, this is only a recommendation. And you can make a motion to approve it, including the provision that you want to put in.
Okay.
So you have to come with something on it, now.
We need to open it up to discussion among the commission to discuss the proposed revision.
Are we ready? Okay.
And also the public.
Yes. So I would like to make a motion to accept the recommendation from staff, but also to include, um, an option for nicer, more, that's not a word that I can use in this, um, to include an option for more substantial fencing to not include the shrubbery.
In lieu of.
In lieu of the shrubbery.
Uh, when you say substantial fencing, do you want it, do you mean that it's solid fencing? Or decorative fencing?
Okay, this is why, what, if I could make a comment, this is what I'm afraid of, is that we're sort of getting on a slippery slope here, and.
That's why I'd rather see something.
It's like design review guidelines almost.
Uh, let me bring to mind a, uh, situation that we had several years ago, related to this one. It was involving the one that's at the end of, uh, uh, Washington Street, just before you get to the underpass from the railroad. And, uh, it turns out that that particular area had been, there were, there were some residential houses right along the, the side of that, and those people were very unhappy that that was being put in there. And it turns out that that property had been rezoned several years ago to commercial, and they didn't know about it. And, uh, they were very upset when they found that out. To resolve that problem, we required them to put in a barrier between their, their, their buildings and the backyards of those residences there. And it, I guess it worked out okay. I looked at it to, today, and it, uh, it, it's at least semi-effective. I don't know whether you'd say it was totally effective or not, but it was certainly better than nothing. So what I'm wondering about is, in those cases where you might have some residential property adjacent to a commercial zone, should we require some isolation like that?
When you say barrier, can you describe the?
It's just a high fence, is what it is.
Yeah, it's a solid fence, isn't it?
What?
Isn't it a solid fence?
Yes, it is, it's a solid, solid fence. I'd guess ten feet high, maybe, I don't know.
Another option.
Eight, eight feet, anyway.
Um, and another option might be, um, when, because your concern is that you want something, you would not require the landscaping if they had something more substantial. I don't know that this would be an option, but I'll just toss it out there, so, because my concern is that you start dictating exactly what material, I mean, if you said solid barrier, it could be solid, but it could be made out of beer cans, I mean, I don't.
Yeah.
So maybe you could make, an option would be the construction barrier wrap, like a mesh. I mean, it's not construction wrap, I don't, that's temporary, but have you seen the, the mesh screen, screening that they'll put over saying?
Baseball films.
You could say, yes.
So I, I mean, I'm, I'm cool with, like, the trees on, on the chain link fence. I'm just trying to say, like, if somebody is willing to invest more into it, do we need to be requiring trees as well? Like, I'm trying to say, like, if a developer's gonna come and put this in here, and they're saying, you know what we wanna do? Because we wanna invest more into this property and ensure that's even safer than a chain link fence, I don't feel like we should then also add trees on top of it. I mean, don't get me wrong, I love trees, but I'm just trying to.
Right, so you're saying solid. Solid fence.
That's a question for what developers use, I don't know the verbiage on that, so you tell me.
Well, a solid, a solid fence would just be offensive, you can't see, there's no, like, a chain link, you can't see through.
Okay.
You're saying it's substantial enough that there's no gaps, really, that you can't see, it's, it's not opaque in any way, I mean, you can't see through it all.
Madam Chair, let me, let me give you a situation where shrubbery or trees might really be appropriate. We have one of these, one of these self-storage units on Wilson Avenue, a primary entrance to our city. to our city. I think it would be appropriate in a case like that to have evergreens, trees, shrubbery, barriers along there, in addition to a fence. Of course, a fence is required for self-storage units like this, so that's just a minimum. But for us to say, no, you're not going to have to do landscaping along one of our major traffic arteries would be a mistake, I think. So we need to include in C-two, at least, in C-two, I think, shrubbery and trees are appropriate.
And that's the one I'd heard concerns about, because it's chain link fence. Is, is the reason why?
But I think he's saying he doesn't think like a wooden backyard fence would look great.
Still want, yeah, gotcha, gotcha.
Yeah, it's just, it's so, it, once you set the standard there, it's just so hard, you just don't know. Every project is different. It's just, it's tricky.
Well, and if I may, I don't, I don't like interjecting if I'm not called upon, but also remember that there is a variance procedure, so there's certainly an option if developer did say, okay, here are the standards of fence with the evergreen. They say we want to do something different, they could certainly bring variance before the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Great.
So there is, there's always an appeal process.
With, with a variance, though, they have to like express a hardship for that, though, correct?
Correct.
Is there, is there a way we can just say, you know, appropriate fencing or landscaping based on, based on recommend, or, you know, can we as a board decide that on a case-by-case basis?
Typically, you don't.
Is that tough to do in a zoning?
Site plans aren't required to come before the Planning Commission.
Okay.
And it has to be, in any state, design standard, it has, has to be stated in your code.
Yeah.
No, I think that the variance would work for this. Don't you think in this case that, like, they could say, I don't know what would be the?
Typically, that's, that's one of the aspects of variances is that you allow for relief from a design standard because of peculiarity of a use and or say.
I think for our discussion tonight, we really need to get something on the books for people to know what zone they're in for doing a warehouse. And I'd like to include staff recommendation for, for C-two, to include fencing and appropriate as defined landscaping.
I think her.
I would like to see maybe even solid fencing between residential and, and C-two, that barrier too.
I have no idea what we're, if we are.
So I'm going to remove my motion because nobody seconded it.
Correct. Excellent.
We still have to open this for public forum, correct?
Correct, we still have public comment.
Any public comments on, on fences?
Ray, if I understood you, you were saying to approve this just for C-two and not for I-one, is that?
That was correct.
But if you do that, the problem is, is you're going, you're going to be having immediate non-conformances.
Yeah.
Where?
Well, they're there, I don't know exactly where.
There are three existing uses, there are three sites that are in I-one now, on Davis, Davidson Street, Washington Street, two on Washington Street. No, Mr. Comer just asked the mayor, are you making, so the mayor is making the motion to approve it only in the C-two zoning district? Is that correct?
That's what he said.
Correct.
Well, maybe I missed something, and I hate to interject here also. I think in my role that you wanted to approve it in C-two, that the fencing and the appropriate landscaping, but also allow these, these storage units in I, in the industrial district as well, but without the requirement of appropriate fencing and, and shrubbery.
That's correct.
That's, I understood.
So you allow them both, but the fencing and shrubbery requirements are in C-two.
Correct.
You repealed your motion.
With the amended motion.
And Ray, you have a motion. Anyone second?
Still need public comment.
I don't think there were, there were no public comments.
No, there's no public comment.
Yes. Do I have a second?
Good.
Second.
Second, okay. Call the question?
No, I was going to say, I think I'm okay with fencing being in I-two, or I-one.
The, the only thing, okay, so now the, do you want me to?
No, I'm just, this is for discussion, we're in discussion right now, right?
Okay, go ahead.
So what is, can I ask what the concerns are with having the chain link fence and the shrubbery in I-one, I-one?
I think Paul felt that it was just.
I just think it's unnecessary in a case by case.
In industrial environments, you don't, don't put in shrubbery and, and trees in, in industrial setting like that.
Unless you want leave certification.
But there's some areas that we have industrial that doesn't make sense right now.
Yeah, that would be a problem. But i- if you had a true industrial environment, then I agree with Ray.
Absolutely.
But unfortunately, we don't always have a true industrial environment.
And that's what my concern is too. Right? And, and that's why I'm trying to find a.
Some industrial over the airport.
Right. So like, this is probably, this, this, this one right here is probably the one that has the best, like, zoning for this area, and if you look at it, there's like, I-one all over the place. That's why I feel like I'd be, I would be more comfortable with going ahead and putting the fencing and taking away my crazy ideas about my big fencing, but having just the chain link fence with the, with the shrubbery in I-one as well. Because if you look at the actual, our actual zoning map, it's, it's peppered with I-one. Would you?
I definitely think we should require it if it's, if it's abutting in other zone.
It's also a little hard to tell between C-one and I-one. Sometimes in color, it's here, all this area.
Yeah, 313 North, South Washington Street is I-one. 1049 North Washington Street is I-one. So this, this one right here.
That's, that's my only comment on that. Nobody else has anything?
What is the motion?
The motion is from, from Mayor Nois was to approve, to move forward with approvals of, of it in both C-two and I-one, and with C-two having the, the expectation of chain link fencing, shrubbery, and just the, not deciduous, evergreen trees.
The landscaping requirement with this in C-two.
That's my motion.
Okay. Do I have a second? I think we already had a second from Mr. Comer.
Oh, Mr. Comer.
Yes. Okay, great. So I'll call the question.
So to be clear on it, approve it with C-two, including chain link fencing and landscaping. I-one excluding fencing and landscaping.
No, I-one includes fencing.
No landscaping.
No landscaping. Unless it butts, I don't think there was any unless.
Oh, there wasn't?
That was Paul.
That was my suggestion, but it's, you know, I think it felt like.
Excludes fencing.
I think it felt like, just like my.
With fencing and no landscaping.
Can I call the question?
Yeah.
Okay. Call the question, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. All opposed?
Me.
Opposed, one, opposed, Rupa. And so the motion passes four to one.
Vanderbilt plays in fifteen minutes.
I know, yes. My dad is next to me as we speak, going, he's watching my kids right now, and Vanderbilt starts. Yes. Okay, all right. So moving on to the text amendment for assignment of staff duties. Mary, would you like to make any comments on that?
Yes, thank you. In 2020, the city administrator reorganized the plan, building codes department into two separate departments. So it used to be building and, and planning department, and the organizational chart for that previous department is found on page seven, D. The city administrator split the department into two, one being the building codes department and the other one being community, community development department. Fine, and those, those two new departments, organizational charts are found on the subsequent pages, seventy-one and seventy-two. So the departments are split, everyone's fine, all the positions are filled, and we're operating. The issue is that throughout the zoning code and the subdivision control code, ordinance, there are countless references to the old job positions. So there'll be references to the old planning and codes director, well, there is no planning and codes director anymore. Now it's either the community development director, my position, the senior planner, then there's the building codes director. So anyway, so everything got reorganized, and all the duties got reorganized. So staff of the two departments went through the exercise of kind of divvying up the job responsibilities based on our job descriptions, and those are found on page seventy-three. So we determined what position does what duties, as outlined in the ordinances of zoning and subdivision. Then I went through the exercise of going through the entire zoning ordinance and the entire subdivision control ordinance, which are on pages seventy-four through eighty-four, finding all references to staff positions and designating them under the new job descriptions. That's the, the short of it. So we're not, so the city administrator has already created these positions and reorganized the department. We're just now reflecting that reorganization into the code, so it's clear to the public, staff, and everyone.
Who's doing what?
Who's responsible for what duties.
Seems straightforward.
Staff admin's approval.
I'm, I'm guessing that we probably don't have any members of the public that would like to comment on this. So at this time, do you have a motion?
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Mary, great. All right, I'm going to probably, discussion, if not, I'll go and call the question. All in favor? Hi.
Hi.
All opposed? Motion passes five zero. Okay, so our next meeting will be held on Monday, July nineteenth. And apparently I was gavel happy earlier, but now I actually get to use it. If anyone else has anything else to say, or then I'm going to go ahead and adjourn this and move into the Board of Zoning. All right. Here we go.